Coordinated, I'll never hear the end of it.
I'm colorblind, that's my problem.
We are on it. Okay. All right, let me call this to order. This is, uh...I didn't see an agenda. This is, um, November 5th. We're the New Market School Board. Uh, we are meeting at 5:30 in a budget work session. But before we do anything else, our agenda speaks to the fact that at our last meeting in October, we, uh, accepted the resignation of Gail DeRosa Wentworth. We appreciate the service that Gail has given over the last two and a half years to the school board and our community. And in our discussion that followed immediately thereafter, uh, around the table, there was consensus that Kimberly Shelton was, um, crazy enough to have put herself on the ballot. And, uh, and but for two or three votes would be here with us for the last few months. And if she were interested, we'd have her join us to fill out the remainder of this, uh, board year. The seat vacated by Gail was a three-year term that's expiring this March. And so by, by policy and by statute, it would be on the ballot anyway. So, uh, we talked about that. And moments later, Kim joined us, and we really appreciated that. But we need to make it formal. So tonight, right now, I would accept a motion from someone to, uh, appoint Kimberly Shelton to fill that vacancy until the election in March.
So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Perfect. With a motion from Mr. Kennison, a second from Ms. McKinney. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We're unanimous then. Uh, and having said that, uh, the school district clerk, Penny Boderman, is with us. And, uh, if she'll do the honors, we'll swear Kimberly in, and then we'll get to work with a budget work session. Thank you.
Okay, Kim, let's raise your right hand. Do you, Kimberly Shelton of New Market, do solemnly swear that you will bear faith and truth allegiance to the United States of America and the state of New Hampshire, and will support the Constitution thereof? So help you God.
I will.
And do you, Kimberly Shelton, do solemnly and sincerely swear and affirm that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all duties incumbent on you as a school board member according to the best of your abilities, agreeable to the rules and regulations of this Constitution and laws of the state of New Hampshire? So help you God.
I will.
Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Hey, hey. Did she include the part about coffee? We always forget that part. Her name tag is all set and in place. That's great. Thank you guys very much for making that happen. Penny?
Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. Okay, so we have two things on the agenda between now and the normal board meeting, or the regular board meeting at 7:00. First is, uh, to, uh, to take a swing at whatever elements of the budget we can get through in the next 45 minutes or so. Dr. Mark Joyce of the New Hampshire School Administrator Association will be joining us right about 6:15 to review his, uh, study that has been, uh, delivered to us recently. So I'll turn it over to Christine and, and the gang, and you guys tell us what, what we're gonna talk about first.
So, good evening. We're gonna talk about the proposed FY17 budget. And with me tonight, we have principal from the elementary school, Sean Pine, and we have our director of technology with us as well, Jason Carey. Um, so we're here tonight, um, to answer any questions that you may have about, um, the proposal. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna just be starting off with discussing the elementary. Um, so if you could all turn to page nine, that's where I'm going to begin. Um, and so what you have on the left-hand side is a summary by function to give you, um, an overview. And then you also have it by object. Um, and just, um, to try to keep with time, I'm gonna just begin with the object breakdown, and then we'll kinda go through page by page and answer any questions that you may have. Please feel free to stop me at any time if I may skip over something, um, that you'd like me to address, or, um, Jason or Sean to address at any time. Okay? So the first one at the bottom, um, is salaries. You can see the salaries are down, um, $74,000. Um, and that's large and partly due to the staffing changes that we have had. Benefits are down $73,000, uh, I mean, sorry, $88,000 there. $73,000 of that is roughly just due to health insurance changes. And then some of the other, um, changes that we have, um, some of our benefits are dental. We have an LTD. We have a life policy and things of that nature, which are all part of the contractual, um, obligations that we have. The contracted services is down, and that's just, um, minimal of $1,300. And that's just due to some technology, um, redesigning with services. The one I do wanna talk and spend a little bit of time about is, um, which is a good thing, is the, excuse me, is increased, is the property serp- purchase, I always get this, it's like a tongue twister, purchased property services. And that's the 400s. And that's up $25,000. And that's largely due to the fact that we, um, put a brand-new modular at the elementary school two summers ago now. And so what we did was, in the first year, um, we didn't have a, the means of funds because the modular got, um, uh, I don't wanna say the word, but, um, it was deemed, um, that we couldn't occupy it in March or April that year. So we didn't have it budgeted, so we used impact fees in the first year to pay for the modular. The second year, we stepped it up and did half modu- half impact fees and half general fund. And this year, you can see the difference, um, is roughly $29,000. So you can see the difference there is to make up for that modular payment. So now, the third payment of the modular, and going forward through the remainder of the five years, will be fully funded by the general fund. Okay? So that's the change there. Minimal changes in the, um, other purchased property services. Supplies, um, that's not a direct relation to supplies when you think of instructional supplies. That's not paper, that's not consumables, it's not that nature. The 600s also represent fuel. Um, and so the fuel was, is down currently, um, by $30,000. I know some of you may not have been here in March, but in March, we actually locked into a contract with Hanscom Fuel Oil. And we saved a dollar five a gallon. So, um, us and the town both did that. So you can see that, um, savings there, and we did have to increase the gallon, the cost per gallon because we know the gallons are gonna go up, but we don't know. So we're a little aggressive with that, um, with that figure. But the fallback is, if we were to go back to a dollar five, we do have the capital reserve, um, utility capital reserve trust fund to tap into if we needed to. So we do have a lifeline there. And then lastly, the equipment is up. That's, um, at the elementary. So that was for some iPads, um, I, uh, iPads, the cart, some Chrome's, and some other technologies throughout the budget. Okay, so that's the overview. So these objects go throughout the entire elementary budget. Okay? Any questions so far? Okay, so I'm just gonna move on. So typically, what we've done in the past is I'll review kind of not line, not every single line item, but I'll kinda give you the highlights of what I think on that page that might really stand out. Um, so the first one is the 1,101,112, which is the salaries. Um, they're contractual. We have 35 teachers, and it represents a 34.4 FTE. One of the teachers is grant-funded, including benefits. Um, we have the implementation of the full-day kindergarten. And due to the higher population, um, higher pupil-to-teacher ratio, excuse me, um, we have hired a paraprofessional to each of the four kindergarten classes. Okay, so that was part of the warrant article that you saw, um, last March. We have two different sub-lines. We do it for the teachers. We also do it for the paraprofessionals, and we also break out long-term subs. Long-term subs is not something that we budget, but we show it. So that way, there's a different, there's a difference between a daily sub, short-term sub, and a long-term sub. Long-term subs are here typically for a longer, um, duration. So, and they get compensated at a higher rate because they are taken over for a teacher position and have more responsibilities, um, in terms of doing, uh, the normal routine a teacher does, a full-time teacher does. So moving on, then we have our supplies, and, um, we always, you'll see the redundancy in every function. So we have supplies, and we have equipment, we have furniture and those things. There's really not too many changes. We have a lot of ins and outs. Most of it is due to reallocation, not additional requests. Because this budget is a level program budget, which means we remained, all programs were the same. We've not changed our programs, we've not increased programs or decreased programs. And we're almost a level-funded budget from the prior year with adding the warrant article in there. That gave us the difference. So you can just kinda see the money's short here, but makes, it's made up in other places. Okay? So turning the page.
Before you leave page 10?
Sure.
Just, I'm skimming around, but go back to teachers for a second. 35 teachers there?
Yep.
I've got 29 classrooms, five at each grade level, plus four at the kindergarten level. That's 29. Help me bridge the gap between that and 34.3 FTEs. I got art, music, PE.
Computers.
A computer teacher.
Yeah, do special ed teachers come underneath that heading?
No.
Nope. So we've got, um, we've got computer, we've got physical ed, music, art. I have two, four, five fifths, four fourths.
Five thirds.
Um, two, four, five thirds, four, 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 four seconds. It's getting hard. Three, well, these might be moved around, 'cause I don't track them like you do. Sorry. So then I would have three firsts, but I think someone's moved, and then I have four kindergarten.
And I have my one-twos, I have two-one-two teachers as well.
Yep. So 34.3 FTE. 35 bodies.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
You're welcome. The one thing I will add to that is, um, the warrant article had also asked for additional personnel to help with the four fifths, um, in the, uh, in the specials. So one of the creative things that, um, that Sean has come up with is that instead of having and hiring a four-fifth teacher, that we've implemented the stipend. So contractually, the teacher's contract says if a teacher teaches a sixth period, you'd give them a $2,500 stipend. That is what the model currently is right now. It's early in the game to see, but we will be reporting back to the board and see how that turns out. But that's the model that we've implemented going forward with the FY17. So we'll keep you abreast of any changes that may have.
Can I just ask? So I see our supplies are going down, textbooks are going down. Is, uh, the textbooks going down because of the purchase of the iPads and Chromebooks?
Do you wanna answer that, or do you want me?
Uh, that's part of it, and also, there isn't per se, like, prescribed text that we assign kids.
Right.
'Cause, for instance, in math, we use a lot of Mahesh Sharma, uh, implementation along with everyday math. So it kinda balances out the everyday math program that we have. We've had it in place for a long time. So a lot of stuff you get through them, you can reproduce, teachers can reproduce it with a photocopier. So that's why you're seeing that kinda dip a little bit.
Right, thank you.
Yep. Just recount my peoples, just to make sure. Okay, any, anything else on page 10 before we move on? So on page 11, um, again, you're just seeing some, um, staffing changes with, um, the professionals, which is the teachers, and again, with the paraprofessionals. Really no other big changes there. You're seeing some additional ins and outs. New equipment for, um, special education. 'Cause you can see that last year, the actuals for the new equipment for special ed was $25,000. That was to, um, we were able to keep, um, some children in-house and get some additional equipment to modify their IEP plans. And so we just have an additional request there, again, to keep, um, abreast of the needs of those students. Um, so here, again, um, the teachers, we have a total of eight special education teaching positions, um, which include two preschool special educator teaching positions. And that, and we also have, that line also includes the special education coordinator, uh, which is a K2, K through 12 position. Um, so the expenses for that position are, um, allocated over the elementary, the middle school, and the high school. Um, and so in this particular case, uh, .6 of the FTE is charged to the elementary school. Um, we currently have 25, um, paras in the building as well, um, and they're all full-time paras. Um, and then again, so the substitutes, um, for both of those, uh, classifications are there, and, um, the supplies, equipment, and so forth. Moving on to page 12, um, one of the items that I'll point out there, if you look at the difference, it's $18,000. That is just changes in, in staff and the tutors. We currently have, um, we have eight tutors total. We have five reading and three math, of which two are grant-funded. The account, uh, 1410113 is to provide for co-curricular, co-curriculars. Um, so that's your chorus, and the chorus assistant, student council, um, drama, Lego club, and things of those, that nature. So, um, sometimes that, that account can get fully utilized, but if there's not, um, participation levels, some of the, um, programs don't get, um, implemented. Um, same thing with the, uh, I'll call them athletics, the jump rope, and archery, and things of those natures as well. We also have homework club. Um, you can see just a small change there just due to, um, the need for participation in the programs. It's just down slightly. Any questions on that page before I go ahead? On page 13, we have, um, one guidance counselor that serves the needs of the, um, elementary school. Uh, we also have one nurse. Um, we have, we provide for substitute for a nurse if, um, there is a need for an absence due to illness or, um, personal leave. We have, um, equipment line, um, so, and we also have equipment repair. So you can see it's up a little bit because some of our equipment is, um, a little outdated. And due to the needs of some of the children in the building, um, utilization is really taking a toll on the equipment.
So would that be something that you'd be looking for, is purchasing new equipment?
Right. For instance, uh, my nurse has, uh, I don't know what you call it, has an audio meter to test hearing.
Yep.
We tried to get it repaired. It's 25 years old.
I was gonna say, it's got to be.
They said, they, they don't even make parts for them, so we had to replace that. And one of those, for instance, is about a thousand dollars. So...
Yep.
Fortunately, some of the equipment that we have in place is starting to reach its capacity in, in terms of its lifespan.
Um, moving on, we have, um, for speech, we have, um, two speech, um, therapists in the building. Um, and they work with, um, children throughout the, the building. We also have a, um, an OTPT, and we also have a occupational therapist, which is a 1.4 FTE position. Um, on page 14, I would just like to point out, um, at the top there, this year, um, we have implemented a, well, let me back up. Last year, we had a full-time librarian in the district, and we had a, we had two paraprofessionals, one at each building. And through the budget conversation, we talked about utilizing two full-time librarians, one in each building, and eliminating the paras. So you can kinda see in the accounts, one's down, one's up. They're just offsetting each other, um, because we've implemented that. So that was, uh, something I just wanted to bring to your attention. Um, and then, no big changes in, um, on page 14, just some technology ins and outs. That's the technical contracted services I mentioned earlier under the objects, is that it's just slightly down. And some minor equipment, um, requests that are up. If you want specifics, I'd be more than happy to touch new equipment with you if you'd like. If we just flip to page 15, um, the justification under the 2231730 talks about how we will use those funds. Again, it's for the iPad airs in the carts, um, and some doc cams, headphones, um, and some classroom speakers. You can see that the replacement equipment's down, uh, but if you flip back, you'll see that, um, the new equipment is up. So again, just some reallocation of some money throughout.
Yep. Hit me with document cameras that need carts. Are these not like an Elmo? These are something bigger, something different?
Um, no, still small, but, um...
But there's more than the two. We're not buying two doc cams and put 'em on a cart. We must have a bunch of them already from previous years. Is that...
We do have some, uh, inexpensive ones. We purchased a few years back, which were kind of a flop. So the plan for this year would be to try a few different brands, a few different makes, models, test them out, more of a pilot, and, um...
I gotta say, it's, I mean, you're seeing it in the school, and your teachers have, if someone was taught, you've talked about it in years past, or someone has, but there's nothing quite like a group of kindergartners, first grade, second grade, even fifth grade, who can sit at their desks and see everything the teacher is doing because the camera propels it through the projector up on the screen, instead of jockeying for position and fighting with your, your classmates the whole time to try to get the best vantage. And that's, you know, especially for any experimentation, any science element. I mean, it certainly with, sometimes with the manipulators we're using for math, things like that, it's just such a great tool, so good.
A lot of the newer document cameras, like you, you talked about science. You can actually get a lens to fit in so it acts like a microscope, projecting microscope. So if you're doing an activity where they wanna see cells or something on that line, you can set that up. As long as they're stained, they're gonna show right up on the screen. So you can point out certain things to the kids, and they can see those differences. It's pretty amazing, so... We do wanna play around with that. I had a few teachers interested, but I also didn't wanna buy a whole sweeping thing and see a bunch just sit and collect dust.
Sit and collect dust, well, once they, I mean, I hope it catches on, you know.
Once you see them used.
Once you see two or three of your peers doing it, like, wow, that's a whole lot better than my kids fighting for space.
Yep.
And so there's great things. Go ahead.
So with the purchase of the three more smart boards, how many smart boards would we have at the elementary school then? I don't, I'm trying to remember how many we bought.
We only have two there right now.
Two mounted. We, we, one was on a mobile.
Yep.
But didn't get a lot of use because every time you bump 'em around, you have to recalibrate 'em, people are having difficulty. So I actually put that into the media center, that Jason put it into the media center for us. We wanna get, I have some teachers who had expressed they would really like to have a smart board, so I'm trying to honor that request. And again, let's try a few, get people interested, and then hopefully, we can get that interest to carry on to other teachers as well.
Hey, I don't, I've, I've been a, as an employee, I've been a roadblock. I've been a real pain in the butt about primary grade, K1s and 2s, um, because there's always a push. You know, five's got it, four's got it, three's got it, why don't I have it? Uh, I'll be really curious. I, I'm not opposed in general to the smart board concept for the younger grades, but when they become a TV set, I've wondered. More importantly, when you mount 'em on the wall, and the kids can only reach the first third of it.
Sure.
It's two-thirds that they're not interacting with, and...
Yeah.
So I'd be curious to see what you guys do. I'm, I'm not suggesting you shouldn't mount them in a K or a 1 or 2, but I'll be interested to get the feedback, because my feedback has been limited, and it's been a little bit, you know, antagonistic. Because, you know, as the money guy, I've been kinda in the way of that.
Right.
But I'll be interested to see where you put it and how the teachers do, because, um, I've seen it pretty pervasively used. And some use it with every lesson.
Exactly.
They spend their lives building new lesson plans so that everything can be on that smart board. And then others that, yeah, they just kinda, so I appreciate your, your approach.
I've seen teachers use them in, for, uh, like, lunch. Are you gonna have hot lunch today, and your names are up on the thing, and you, kid walks over, puts his finger on the name, and clicks it over to, yes, I'm getting lunch.
And moves it up.
And that sort of thing, yes, so...
It's a lot about student engagement, and so...
Yeah.
The more you can engage them.
Right, right.
Would you have one in, what, is it preschool or kindergarten?
We have one in kindergarten that's...
That's two feet off the ground.
So you mounted it down.
Yeah. So they can get to it.
So you fixed that problem. That was my, one of my concerns. Good.
Yeah.
Excellent. Okay, thank you. That's awesome.
Um, just so, some, some highlights. Um, we have one principal, um, and we have one assistant principal. Um, we have two secretaries that are full-time. One is a, um, 230-day contract, and the other one is 260. Really no changes in terms of equipment and postage and printing and all those things. They're pretty, um, level there. Um, one thing I, well, two notes I wanna just make sure that I reiterate, um, because we did when we, I did the review. Um, keep in mind that when we go throughout the entire budget, that we are in, um, year three of a three-year contract with the teachers. So therefore, um, the teachers' salaries are all status quo until we reach a successor agreement. Um, and the classified staff, um, they have received a step. But this year, we did no change to the grid. So we, what that means is we didn't do a percentage increase to the step and track this year like we've done in the past. So everybody will just get their step. But what we needed to think about was, we have, um, 22 people that are at the top of the step, which means if we didn't do that percentage increase, then those folks would not get a raise. Um, so what we did for those 22 is we, um, we have a side note that says that they will get a 2% increase, um, to the raise, so that everybody has a share in that. So, um, moving on to page 16, um, you can just see we have, um, we have two full-time custodians, one part-time position, and one head custodian. Uh, we also have, um, substitutes there. Water and sewer, um, is slightly down. Um, repair and maintenance, um, is slightly down. Um, you're seeing some, um, electricity, um, fuel oil, like I mentioned earlier, is down $30,000 because we, um, are locked into a contract for next year, um, and so forth. Transportation monitor, uh, we had two, we're down to one, um, things of that nature, so... And you can see that I put the, uh, the average use of our fuel oil over the three years is also decreased. And we can contribute that to, um, we also put a brand-new automation, controls automated system into the elementary school last summer. Um, so we're reaping the benefits on both the fuel consumption and the electricity. Page 17, um, so, for those of you who've been with me for a couple of years, we originally had all the benefits, um, throughout the entire, um, packet. And so that ended up being like a 60-something-page, um, document. And so what we've done, um, per, um, the request, we had a committee that met, and we took some feedback, and we've consolidated all the benefits. So now all the benefits in each section are broken down into the 2900s. Um, so you can kinda just see the sick day buyback. Um, we have an insurance buyout, we have health insurance, dental, life, and... I won't read them all, but you can kinda just go through and just see where we are. Um, the two that I will point out is, again, the health insurance is down $73,000. Um, and then the very last line is the modular unit, because, like I mentioned earlier, we phased it in. So now we've got the full modular payment of the $59,000, um, in the budget. And so we'll have two more years after this year, 'cause it's a five-year deal. Um, we, for the health insurance, um, we currently have, um, a projected, um, increase of 5%. Next week, um, roughly around the 12th, we are hoping to get the final number, um, what the GMR is. So that number could change. I will tell you the good news, is we did get our dental rate between the last time I printed this, and the dental is, um, it's a 0% increase. So what you'll see is, as soon as I get the health insurance rate, I'm going to make an adjustment. Um, so I will make the adjustment for the dental, and I'll also make the adjustment for the health. And we'll start from there.
Is your 5% placeholder on health your own, or is that something that you got from school care?
That is my own. So we haven't even gotten the GMR yet. That's what will be next week. So, um, and the re, and the, where I came up with the 5% is, uh, this is our second year with them. The first year, um, we had a 5.9% increase, and last year, we had a 5.1. So, um, we're hopeful that we can remain in that arena.
Okay.
Couple of, I wish Dr. Martin was here. First comment is, um, I think in the future, uh, decisions relative to salary increases and so forth should come before the board, so we can discuss them.
What do you mean?
Talked about, um, increasing people a certain percentage above the top step. I think those are discussions that the school board ought to be having.
It will come to you. We, we're in negotiations right now.
No, he's talking about the classified. This is, this, in the past, this is typically...
And I think, I mean, we can certainly change it now.
No, you can change it.
No, no, no. But it's a tough, it's tough to cycle. The, the last couple of years, I've said the same thing. We get to this point, the grid's already been done, it's in the budget, you think, when are we gonna have a conversation about steps? Yep. Uh, steps that are at 4% or 3% or 2%, or could we change it? What would it take to change it? We need to have some, and part of it is, some of that conversation that we have probably deserves feedback from the people that would be impacted by it. If we, you know, if it's not in the budget season, we got all year, we could be talking about that.
Right. My, my point is, a decision to increase the steps 2%, but not a general increase should not be a surprise to the board.
Right.
Of the non-union employees. The second, and the, the happier note, um, is if you go back to page nine on object salaries. Christine, that's everybody's salary. Christine, that's everybody's salary.
That's all the salaries in the elementary.
Yep, so you've got $3,808,000 in 2014.
Yep.
2015. You're proposing $3,909,000 in '16, '17, which looks great. Because last year we approved $4,041,000.
Correct.
My assumption is that the reason that that's going down is we're losing more senior teachers and replacing with less senior.
That's correct, which is having a net reflect on the health insurance, because they're still on their parents' insurance, which is a great thing.
Right. So that's a, that may be somewhat of a blip, but I got it. So when you do the, the three, the salaries for the 2016, 2017 at $3,967,000, that does not include negotiated increases?
Correct, there will be a separate warrant article with all the, with all the benefits and everything shown.
Right.
The associated FICA and retirement.
Right. And is the $3,967,000 the result of your adding up actual salaries?
It is, current salaries, yep. So that's when, when he asked me earlier, I have this lovely, you won't be able to read it, but this is my, this is my sheet. And so what I do is I take current staffing, and, and if we had a contract, I'd project them based on the step and track, and if I don't, it's status quo.
I think that's great, because I think sometimes in the past, we've taken the actual expense and goose it up 4%.
Nope.
We have.
Yep.
And this, this is, this is perfect. Although alarming that, because it could come around and hit us if we didn't have significant turnover. Good, terrific, thank you. And the same thing on benefits, 2014 actual is $1,606,000.
Yep.
You're proposing $1,707,000. I forget how many people that is, 32 or something? That's, that's great on a benefit increase.
Yep.
Including the 5% increase, that's terrific.
Correct.
Good, thank you.
Right. One of the things you could do for me, if I go back and review this, and I think it'll be, it'll be helpful for the whole budget, and I, I guess I ask the board, if it's not relevant or valuable, that's okay. I would love to see, completely redacted, because although other communities like to put names with it, I'm not interested in finding out what individuals make, but for instance, the 34.3 FTEs.
Mm-hmm.
I would love to see how that breaks out in terms of how many bodies, you know, you said I got five of these, and four of these, and five of these, and so on and so forth. See how the fractions play, and I'd just like to, I'd love to do that for the elementary, for special ed, for teachers. I'm not interested in paras, you know, but on the teachers, it would be interesting to look at, and I think it would be informative for the board.
You have it.
Oh, I have it, right.
You have it for negotiations.
Well, but.
It's also in the annual report.
Well, the annual report's slightly different.
Actually by name.
Yeah.
And what I'm looking at is, I'd be looking at, like, here are K's, ones, twos, threes, fours, fives.
So you want it broken out that way?
And then, well, I mean, you could sort it or whatever, but I don't want names in there, but I would love to see M30, Step 10, M30, Step 10, M30, Step 10, because I think it would be useful for the board to say.
Yes.
Veteran, 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 woo, veteran, 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 you know what I mean? I'd like, and then, and then not only you see the, the head count that adds up to this number, but you see, to Al's point, when we asked the question, is this a reflection of veteran teachers higher on the scale leaving and, and less experienced, maybe less educated teachers who are earlier in their career coming in, and there being a delta in terms of the money, I think it would be helpful to see that.
So do you want a scatogram, or do you want a scatogram by building?
I, I would be, I'm really looking for like a, like a staff list without the staffing names, do you know what I mean? Like, I'm just, something simple.
Yeah, I have it, so.
Something simple like that, I know you do, because you, to put it together, you got it, so. And it doesn't have to be part of the packet, and I, I just think it would be informative for the board.
Want me to send it as informational?
Yeah, just informational, so that we can just go down through and, and really, any pains that you could or would like to take so that people can feel like, this isn't about, I've worked in communities where it feels like you go to the grocery store and it was, ah, I know what you make. I don't want it to be like that, that's not the intent, it's in, in the aggregate, to be able to look at it and have a sense of, this is what our teacher, our faculty looks like, in terms of their experience, their education, and so forth.
What is gonna be, how do you want it broken down? Do you want it by degree, years of experience, you want it by building, you want it by position?
I would tie it to the accounts, so that you can say, oh, here's the 34 and a half that are over here, and here's the eight that are over here, you know.
Well, help, too, understanding test scores, things like that, so that we can go back and say, your test scores went up, here are all your seniors, here are newbies, I do, I like, I like the idea a lot.
It's just a.
Something we can use all year.
And it's a splash, I mean, it's a moment in time, because that changes, because they continue the educated. They change track and step, you know, they change degree in educational accomplishment that way. And then we've got a fair amount of coming and going, but it's still would be.
Just salaries?
Yeah.
Okay, just wanna make sure I get your.
Yeah, and because, and that number really, there's a lot of roll-up stuff that's included in this in terms of, you don't have to break out the, this component of the salary and this component, component of the salary. I'm just looking for, show me that there's veterans and there's newbies, and show me what the value of that position is.
Okay.
You know what I mean, you know, combined.
Just make sure I understand, so it's gonna be elementary school teacher.
Elm.
No, no na, no names.
No names.
It's gonna say 10 years of service.
It's probably gonna say kindergarten, there'd be four of them, and it'll say.
Right.
Yeah, I'll read it too.
Bachelors, bachelors plus 15 with Step 3, bachelors plus 4, and a dollar amount, and that's.
In the years of service.
Which, the year, the step, if somebody never taught anywhere else and they walk in here at Step 1, then it would be the years of service. If they taught 10 years somewhere else and then came in here, or if they're at the top of the step and they've been there for 18 years and they're 30-year veteran, you won't know that necessarily, because it's just the step that shows. I don't know if you've got years of experience that you could dump.
So, no, I have it, so what it will say, I'll leave all the columns so you can find it. So it's gonna say the 1,101,112, which you can match to the budget, and it's gonna say the FTE, then it's gonna say the total salary, and it'll say appropriated salary, okay? Because there's a difference between total and appropriated, and then it'll also say grant-funded, okay? So you'll know what's grant-funded. And then it's, it will have new market longevity, number of years in new market, it will have longevity, number of years of service, of experience, Step 15, and then if there's any stipends.
Perfect, wow.
Okay?
That's great.
That's exactly what my sheet is, so you can match it all.
All I was saying.
All I'm gonna do is add a column.
I don't want anybody to feel like, like there's any intent to, to identify individuals, because it's really just.
No, because this is random, it's not alphabetical, it's not anything, so.
That's great. Any other questions, we're, our next team is, our next presentation is upon us. That's the elementary, maybe we could spend the next four or five minutes talking about the plan for the budget moving forward. Unless there's any other questions about the elementary.
Just one question on that, on that chart we're just talking about, I know if, while we're at it, it might make sense to find out where we are as compared to, you know, other districts.
I think that's a different study that needs to be done.
You know, just, just to, I mean, I think it, I think it somewhat relates, you know, are we.
On the classified?
Yeah, are we on par? And, you know, maybe, you know, as, as another column, if you will, what's the delta? Or what's, what's for that position, where, you know, just so we have it all laid out. See if we're in the way we should be.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
A lot of this for me goes to, somebody's gonna look me in the eye, because they always do, and ask me, did you, did you really understand that number? And I'm thinking, yeah, well, I mean, it's 38 people, but when you see this, you can't help but feel like you're more credible, because you say, I, I don't necessarily know who those people are, but I don't need to know who, I just know that these are real positions, paid at this level for this, for this job, so I think that's great.
I'd just comment, I'm having work with salary surveys, that if you put a salary survey that says custodian, you gotta make sure the jobs are the same, and very often they're not.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And the total package.
Right, if you have secretary, it's a secretary to who, to whom, is it whom?
Whom.
Whom?
Yeah.
So I, I, if we wanna do a salary survey, which I think we should, I'd recommend we do one. And, and have it done as a, as a concentrated effort.
The, the only reason why I raised that is that was something that JEC covered, but they covered it in general, so I couldn't tell, you know, are we on par with our, you know, with other districts, with our long-tenured teachers? You can't tell from those numbers, I mean, it's just one number in the JEC report, and we're, and we're lower than some other districts, higher than some other districts as well, but this one number may be misleading, you know, we, we may be, you know, but that's not a conversation we need to have today, but it just, it just stood out to me when I read that in the JEC report.
Yeah. So. And we only have the one union.
Right.
Right, so.
Right.
So our teachers are, are a collective bargaining group, that we're negotiating with them now. And she just said, you know, you don't see any increases in their salaries in here, because it'll all be in that separate warrant article. But everybody else that works in the district is outside of a union relationship right now, so we have schedules and scales, but I think as we, as you talk about, the state will give us good information, they have it available, to give you a sense of how we compare collective bargaining-wise to other, other teacher groups. But pulling custodians and secretaries and food service and things like that, it's, that, you gotta look a little bit to make sure you've got apples to apples.
Counting staff, personnel, you know, so.
Absolutely, okay. Yeah, if you wanna, we'll just take one minute and say, right now we are scheduled for, I don't know. Can I put it on here? Six o'clock, we're scheduled at six o'clock a week from tonight on the 12th. And you're gonna attempt to do the rest of the budget that night.
So.
Is that fair?
Because we need to make up for the SAU, and so.
We're gonna present the SAU and the junior senior high.
And the junior senior high.
And then any other elements that we want.
When is that?
That's next Thursday, a week from today, at 6:00. It's not a regular meeting, it's only a budget session. I think, you know, we could plan on two to three hours, go to six, six to eight or nine.
And it's on the calendar.
It's on, yeah, so we'll do that, and that'll be here, I think, in chambers. I, I didn't confirm that, but I think it's here. And then we're scheduled to turn around and be back here Saturday morning, the 14th, at 9:00, which will be more reflective, you know, that'll be our opportunity to take a swing, talk about things that we like or don't like, wanna make changes or what have you, and hopefully come close to adopting a number, because.
On the 19th.
On the 19th, yeah, on the 19th, we try to, based on everything we do on Saturday, we'll come back the next Thursday night and, and hopefully take final motions so that she can prepare it to go to the budget committee.
On the 19th.
Yeah, potentially. When, when are they looking to hear it?
They have to have it, they always get it that Monday.
Okay.
And then I go to the meeting December 9th, uh, December 7th.
Hey, you guys, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you very much.
So please let me know if there's something in particular that, just because we're pressed for time, I try to give you.
Looks good.
Quick version.
You're in good shape.
Looks really good.
I think there's a lot of information in here.
Jason, are you able to join us on the 12th?
But if there's not something in there that you want.
I'll try to summarize early on.
Next one, just send me an email and I'll have it prepared, so that way.
Thank you.
Sean, thank you very much, sir.
Sean, thank you guys for coming, appreciate it, appreciate the support.
How are you?
It's nice. No, it's good.
I'm kinda hot.
I don't know, did you get one?
I'm sorry.
They probably don't have the, the heat adjuster for 70-degree.
My pleasure, sir.
Hi, Elizabeth McKinney.
Hi, Elizabeth.
Nice to meet you.
Yeah, hi, Dr. Joyce, Mike Kennison, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Hello, Kim Shelton, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Elzak.
Hi, nice to meet you.
Christine Blume, Elizabeth McKinney.
Kim Shelton, nice to meet you.
Elzak.
Nice to meet you.
Elizabeth McKinney, nice to meet you.
Hi, Mike Kennison, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Kim Shelton, nice to meet you.
Nice to see you.
Elzak.
Nice to meet you.
Hi, Mark.
Are you serious?
Yes, exactly.
Hey, gentlemen, the, the cameras are rolling, I don't know if he's got us live in town tonight, or if this is just for tape, tape delay or for the replay, but for, for all of the benefit of those at home, I just wanna say, welcome, I'm really glad that you guys are here. Doctors Joyce, Ayers, and Glad, I'll let Mark, who is the executive director of the New Hampshire School Administrator Association, make formal introductions of yourself and your group, but the, the document is before us. We've all had a chance to review it, I think, and we really appreciate the work, and appreciate you joining us, so we'll spin it right over and let you have at it. Thank you, sir.
I'll stand up, don't you can speak into a mic?
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Well, again, we appreciate the opportunity to work on behalf of the district. Aid has introduced us all, but we represent New Hampshire School Administrators Association. We're a private nonprofit association that responds to individual school districts' RFPs for studies. This year has been particularly busy, we're doing eight different studies. So we're pleased that we're able to get this in and finish it on time for it to be useful to you. The report that you have, we also gave Dr. Martin a copy of that unbounded in white copy as well as on a CD, so it can be posted or shared or copied to your convenience. You retain ownership of that, and so it's copyrighted with that notion in mind. Our experience tells us that sometimes people like to grab pieces of documents offline rather than quote the whole source, so we try to protect it that way. On page two, there's a table of contents that kind of describes the study itself. I will not walk through all of those pieces, but highlight some of the major ingredients. On pages three and four, you have a listing of the tables. We provided a complete listing of different tables that look at capacity assessments as well as building inventory. But in a nutshell, our scope of service was to provide a neutral look at the facility needs as a way to, we just demonstrate, is there a need or not? As we come to work on a study, we bring no preconceived notion about it, regardless of whether others have studied it. But rather, first of all, try to understand the values of your school district, of your school buildings, and then how that projects into the space that you have. In this case, we were provided enrollment projections that were done for your district by NESTE, and we use those as a basis of measuring your capacity versus your enrollment. So again, we have no interest in the outcome of the study, other than to fulfill our obligations on the contract, but we don't gain anything by any recommendation that's made. The, we start with just a basic overview of the district, again, that's very familiar to all of you, but we do that because this document can be read by anyone, and we want to provide a full understanding of the community and the school composition. On pages eight, we walked through a timeline of the different tasks that we engaged in. We enjoyed very much meeting with your building administrators, your district administrators, touring your schools when they're empty, as well as when they were full. We've been in all schools several times, saw them gain a good understanding of their use at different times of day throughout the year. Enrollment projections that we use are on page 11, and that was the recommended table that was produced by NESTE. That becomes useful a little later in the study when we compare it to your overall capacity. When we, let's first look at the elementary facility, that begins on page 11. It goes through a general description of the elementary program, then a description of the building. As you're very familiar, that building contains four portable classrooms, and we know that they are in good repair and of full use right now. But in terms of permanent structures, they are not considered eligible for building aid as an example. So what we did for you was project the capacity of that school, including the portable classrooms, as well as excluding them. But first, we had a look at the overall building strengths, those are on page 12. And then we identified on page 13, some of the challenges of that space. Again, that's not unknown to you at all, but perhaps folks in the public who haven't yet been there. The gymnasium is clearly undersized, as is the cafeteria there. Most notable requiring six different seedings for your lunch period, and a very early lunch for many of the elementary children. There are some other confined spaces. On the bottom of page 13, we project that building's capacity using your own class size guidelines, including the portable classrooms. As a general formula, I'll just note this once, for each of the schools, we calculate that class size times the number of learning spaces, but then we multiply that by .95 in the elementary case, .85 at the high school. Purpose for that is to allow for odd-sized classes, group classes like multi-age grouping, and uneven cohorts of students moving through school, and that is an industry standard. At the high school, we also, the reason we use .85 is because often your program requires you to offer what are called singletons, courses for certain population, even though they may not. Courses for certain population, even though they may not carry 20 students. You still, in order to meet the requirements, need to offer it. So the industry standard there is .85. Summary, when you use your class sizes and the portables, it becomes a capacity of about 549. If we were to eliminate those four portable classrooms, your capacity drops to 465. In both of those cases, you're at or beneath your current enrollment in those schools, grades.
So where did you refer, where do we refer to that, those numbers?
On pages 13 and 14.
Thank you.
And then on 14 is when you eliminate the portable classrooms. And then we also, as part of our RFP, promised 100% capacity, and that is, what if your building was staffed using the largest possible class sizes allowable by New Hampshire guideline? And that's what you see in table four. You see there, the capacity jumps significantly, but it also is assuming 30 students in every classroom. From grade three, it applies all the way through grade 12. And 25 in your preschool, as well as first and second grade. I would also note that the state standards has a note underneath that guideline to say all school districts are encouraged to strive for lower sizes, as we all could imagine. Table five shows you the functional capacity, again, without the portable classrooms, if you were to use the maximum state guideline. Table six is an inventory of all spaces, what they're used for, to the best of our ability. Identification of the room number using your current known room numbering system, as well as an estimate of square feet for those spaces. And as I'm sure you're very familiar, the elementary school as a whole is a much newer facility than wings of the high school. So most of those rooms are actually built according to the state guidelines and specs. Very pleased to see an early mentor of mine's name throughout that building, and that was Ed O'Connor. I was principal over in Epping when he was principal at the elementary school. Now, if we move on page 16, we begin to look at the junior senior high, grade six through 12. Again, the process is similar, we described the unique programming, here we broke it up in two pieces. One for the junior high and one for the high school. In that, as you know, while they share the same building, their instructional program and core offerings are slightly different. That progresses through, as we described the secondary level. And then we do an inventory of the junior high school space, realizing, again, it's one big building, but what space is being assigned to the junior high? What are its dimensions? And what would be needed if those were to be made according to the appropriate state guideline? And that's where you'll see a delta in that right-hand margin on table seven on, on page 20. Where what we identify as a deficiency are that the three lab classrooms used at the middle school level are all undersized. And under-equipped, in the sense of not having water ability, wash sinks, and some safety showers. That are typically in a standardized lab classroom. We also see a shortage of special ed place, classrooms, because they're currently housed in available space, some of that as small as 215 square feet, small offices. Then on table eight, we profile the high school class spaces. Here, you note that there are a number that are in normal-sized classrooms, but you have a whole wing of the building, the 1920 wing of that building, where the classrooms are significantly undersized. They range from 520 to 765 square feet. Again, you'll see here the delta in the right-hand column, showing the need for new classrooms in place. For English Language Arts, Mathematics, four for English Language, one for Math, one for Social Studies. And one of the three lab classrooms at the high school is undersized. So again, that needs to be upgraded, in order to meet current standards. Yes, sir?
When you went through the elementary school, you, my sense was that you went through and you talked about our actual populations and the size of the room. Is this now referring to what the state would like to see those be?
Well, it actually does both for you. Because we have classrooms being used by student groups of various sizes, whether they're 20 or 25, that are substandard in size, wouldn't be approved as a classroom period. And so, what we've called out for you here is what capacity would be necessary in order to fit the enrollment that you have in your nine through 12 level? Now and in the future, that would meet the state standards. So it considers both aspects of it, your future enrollment, as well as appropriate space.
So, it, it, it takes our projected enrollment in the state recommended size?
Right.
Is that right?
And what we started with, with the high school, the middle school, because, again, that facility is in one big building, the two curriculums differ. So we took their curriculum and program, your curriculum and program, and projected what kind of space it would need in order to exist. What we knew is where it is now, therefore, what is needed in order to accomplish it, and that's the right-hand column. We also did that on table 10 for your shared spaces. That's table nine. Here, for example, we have art room. Currently, you do have an art room, but it's across the street. It's a renovated facility, as you well know, doesn't meet the current standard. The one that's in the building is undersized as well, so we call for one full-sized 1,200 square foot art classroom. We also note below that if you wish to have one separate for the middle school, which is quite common, but not required by the standard, you would need two classrooms. Computer spaces, so on, gym obviously is of great shape and ample size for both schools. But their student support center activity is now in a very small room, 215 square feet, we call for one. We're confident that with these accommodated spaces, all of your future enrollments that you project will be handled as well as your program. What's different about that is, you know, secondary schools have required offerings that not all kids take. But they elect in and out of them, but there are basic credit requirements. It's a little harder to work at than it is at the elementary, where all students take the same thing because they're in a grade group. So, again, sir, in answer to your question, this accomplishes both. It identifies your program needs, the available space you have, what is missing, in order to meet your future 10-year enrollment, that we understand from this document. Did that answer your question, sir?
Based on projected enrollment.
Correct.
That's the key, okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Can I maybe just highlight, for public consumption, because folks will watch this and wonder when they see the document. You have not used the state standard as a hard and fast rule. Is that fair to say? Because, for instance, in, in a, a number of the spaces that you've just described at the junior senior high school, you have essentially identified space, classroom space, that is smaller than the prescribed 900 square feet. And said, it's within a margin of reason, given the likely class sizes based upon the program that you understand as to have. Can you comment just briefly, I mean?
That's an excellent point. And perhaps I should preface it by saying, we are naturally conservative people. Don't wholesale call for new structures when they're not necessary. Much of that junior senior high school is, is a quality building, it's undersized, and there's clearly a wing that is outdated. Some of the infrastructure needs to be replaced. And so, we'll note in our study several places where we identify that, when you take current, one of the current lab classrooms at the high school is undersized, but it's 1,000 square feet. It's clearly large enough to be an acceptable classroom, although it's too small to be a lab classroom. And so we realize that through renovation, as well as addition, you're going to seize and reuse a variety of good spaces that will no doubt fill the needs for your special ed spaces, perhaps other classrooms like that. And we note from when we finished our study, we were shared a copy of the work you've been doing with your architect right now. And I believe one of the designs we looked at when we were finished accomplished that, because it did remodel a wing and reutilize that space more appropriately in a redesign.
Thank you very much.
If I could just summarize, perhaps, by looking at page 28 with you, and table 10 and 11. We try to pull together for you and the public, kind of a summary. If you have your K5 program, and we use the capacity of the class sizes versus the enrollment that is present right here this year. You see that with the portable classroom use, you have a little bit of flexibility there to meet your guideline, but not very much, considering the size of the population. To only have an excess of 16 out of 533 students. Without those classrooms, you'll see there's a significant shortage. So it's vital that you either maintain the four portable classrooms, or replace them with new structure. On table 11, we summarize what we see as the major structural deficiencies. That being that the gymnasium space is undersized and overutilized. The cafeteria and kitchen areas are simply too small. You need only identify and watch, and perhaps your kids have experienced the six different lunch periods in that building. The music room is quite crowded there. There are some minor renovations needed to your front entrance security, we believe, to make it more secure in today's practice. The pre-K classroom is slightly undersized. There's general lack of storage, as well as office space for your school nurse and the assistant principal. So our recommendations for that are certainly more modest than the high school, and that is to build a new gymnasium, convert existing space to an expanded cafeteria and kitchen. And also, see what kind of renovated space can be achieved from that change for school nurse and administration to improve the front entrance security. And perhaps the administrative office space. Minor in comparison to those of the high school, which is a much older building, table 12 on page 30. General observations, the classrooms in the 1920 wing are undersized and clearly inadequate for current instructional needs. That creates a need for additional rooms. The hallways themselves are undersized. When you measure the distance between locker on both sides, it's five feet. And code recommends that that be eight to 10 feet at a minimum. All three science labs in the junior high section, and the biology lab at the high school are undersized, without lab stations. And as I mentioned before, that includes water, but also safety showers where appropriate. High school art classroom is located across the street. The main entrance is confusing, to say the least, and makes it hard to ensure security at that entrance. Our recommendation would be to build an addition that creates classroom space and lab spaces. That part of that should be in the renovated wing, or the replaced wing, that's the 1920s wing. To build a new art classroom for shared use, but also, if you judge appropriate, consider a second art room that would be dedicated simply for middle school use. Create additional special ed and bathrooms for staff and students. Improve the main entrance, security and access, and also a need, when you, to improve the kitchen space. We, we close with some general conditions, and I'm sure those are familiar to you, because you've been working on the issue of school construction. But deal with the idea of connectivity, the importance of efficiency, of safety, use of color, and so on. Be happy to stop there and open it up for any and all questions, and call on my colleagues to add if I should miss something. Or had to miss something.
Questions from the board?
Well, first of all, Dr. Joyce, this is, this was a well-written, easy to understand, there's a lot in here, I read every word of it, but it's understandable to the layperson, so I appreciate that. I didn't find a typo in the whole thing, so you, obviously.
Whenever you run off 40-plus pages, you always gotta be something, huh?
Yeah, yeah, that's a, one indication of a good, good document, but, just, just a couple of things, if I could, on page seven, second, first full paragraph beginning, the town's 2013 population. You, you put an adjective in there, interesting and relatively young mixture, did you notice something there?
Yes, and we do a lot of demographic studies, and this year, right now, we're doing four that are simply demographic profiles. What we're seeing on average statewide, for example, is that ages 19 and younger throughout New Hampshire are 18 or less. In your case, it's 26%. Also, a, a shrinking age cohort is 35 to 54. In your case, that's a strong 31%. So it points out a couple of things, perhaps some are obvious, that you have a generally younger average population than the state average. Which, you know, maybe speaks to being in the southeast, maybe it speaks to the proximity to the university, and how that census information plays out. Of course, those profiles are extracted from the last census, so that's 2010 information that we work from. But it was notable to us and interesting that there was a strong younger cohort. That could be why you're seeing a stable elementary population. And not unlike some other communities we've looked at, but very few have that. Most of the ones we look at are shrinking. Not only are the school age populations shrinking, but their preschool is shrinking as well. So it may signal that you're gonna hold your population, of which I know you're judicious about constantly measuring that and checking it. And, just to make sure that it doesn't spike up on you.
Sure. Just a related question, if I may, I just had a few, but on page eight, the first numbered paragraph, it, you, you used the NESTEC study, and that's the December 14 study that the, that the JAC report refers to as well. And just a, I guess a broad question, are those good numbers and why? Is that something, do you typically rely on a NESTEC?
No.
Study?
No, we're a competitor.
Yeah, okay.
To be quite honest.
All right.
We do our own studies.
I got you.
And, so I would have no comment about their work, I don't understand the background of their science. But we, when we do it, we look at the community, we try to understand local planning initiatives, future initiatives, type of housing sales, price of housing sales, as a way to try to identify. Another unique characteristic of ours is we actually use GPS location to, to give you a map of your town with a dot for the resident of every child by grade. Why that, it's not only colorful and interesting to your transportation person, but what it does identify for you is where the groups of kindergarten, first, second graders are. And sometimes that can be very revealing. In Epping, for example, a study we did about a year and a half ago, what it uncovered was the mystery of why they were having more kids show up at kindergarten than their birth numbers indicated significantly. And it turned out, I don't know if you're familiar with that town, but off Prescott Road, those giant apple orchards have developed to new houses. What happened is families moved in with young children already born. So they weren't part of the native population mix, they weren't born there, but they are waiting to come to first grade and kindergarten. So that was visually a way to portray that to the community. So everybody does it a little different, we like our way, but we're a competitor to it.
Okay. I, in, in, in looking at those numbers, I know you haven't done your own study, I think, I think you may have done one for the district back in 2010?
Yes, we did.
Yeah. How do I ask this? Does this seem on, on the target?
Now, did you revisit those, we were?
I did, well, I can, I can't.
Am I looking for, am I asking for a new proposal, is that what's coming?
I can't, I can't, I can't speak to the NESTEC study, but I can speak to the 2010 study. In 2010, the projected population for the high school was 494. So you're, we're only off by 3%. At the elementary school, it's, we had projected 603, so it's a little off, it's 11%, well within a margin of error.
And that was six years ago.
For, for this year?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
One of the things, again, for public consumption, not, not necessarily for you gentlemen, but one of the things that I think we talked about over the last year is one of the things that I think we talked about over the last year is, and you just spoke to it, the elementary enrollment seems to be hanging steady, even though there had been decreases at the junior/senior high building, at the middle school and high school. And that seems, it's, it's left us wondering, I, we've had, we've made comments of, have we not done enough, have we not done enough exit interviewing with the population that's moving out to private schools or other alternatives? What can we do better to better understand where they're going? And it may not, it may be they're not going anywhere. I mean, I, there's other information that might be out there.
That apply there, and, but I think it also, one of the tickling ideas that comes to mind is that observation about your young cohort of students as an average, to have 26 percent that are 19 or younger, higher than the average of, of schools, and also your relatively young overall population. Your secondary is no doubt impacted by the fact that you have available alternatives close by to you, in the sense of parochial education, private education, whether it's a charter school or, or a public, or a Catholic school. Not all communities are located in an area where that's an option.
Thank you. Al's got a, got a follow-up?
I don't want to hog here.
Oh, no.
Three quick questions.
Go ahead.
And they kind of relate to each other. The, the facilities community visited some schools or a school that delivered food services in a very unique way, the, not the typical cafeteria sort of program. Are you familiar with some of the trends in that area? And the second one is, consistent with it, is really the future of education. One of the things that troubles me as a school board member is we're going to look around five years from now, and we're not going to be delivering education for 10 years. We're not, I'm not an educator, I'm blowing this from no knowledge, but we're not going to be delivering education the way we are today. Can you, can, can you give us some flavors of some things that are being done uniquely to look at?
Well, our section of the general considerations there identifies four areas that we think are changing in the future, and we make those commendations about that. Obviously, one of those being technology and our ability to be able to not only engage in the technology in our instructional program, but have sufficient technology to allow for students to take courses at BLAX or other places inside which affect efficiencies for you. And we also know that assessment measures for students are moving to online assessment. I'm not familiar with what school you visited and their lunch program, but I know that, you know, schools generally still have, who are able to secure a lunch room, prefer to have it cooked in the school, be able to take advantage of the Department of Agriculture's commodities program to be able to meet the needs of free and reduced students. But there are some cases where school districts, rather than employ people themselves to do that, have let out RFPs for companies to come in and run them, but they still need the kitchen facility inside of the school for the preparation. They need to meet public health ordinances as well as Department of Agriculture. So there are many companies like Cafe Services and others, I'm sure you're, I think you is familiar with those, that have come into contract, but they still need the appropriate space for the preparation. I would go back 40 years when I was principal in Epping, and that time we didn't, and we satellited our food from another school through the building, and it was horrible. I mean, it was so painful. Not that the food was horrible, the people did the best they could, but the delivery and the cleanup and the care was a big challenge to the instructional program, because we literally moved through the school building to serve food. Many places do that anymore.
My, a last question. As we think about regionalization and efficiencies, we often have, I often have thoughts about, why doesn't, why don't three communities get together and provide an art education center, like we do with technology, or, or special needs students? Is there, is there a way that we can get together and deliver special needs programs in a better way? Have you seen any of that kind of-
Yes, in fact, I was engaged with Newmarket over the years and C-COAS Learning Collaborative, where we shared operations for low incidence, high need, special need students. That goes back to the 70s and 80s. That's been pressured, if you will, by the more modern practice of including all students in their resident school location, supported by federal law for that, but there's still shared services. There's also been cooperative purchasing done of materials that's been C-COAS-wide at times. And there's some great examples of your collaborative work right now, still, and that would be the C-COAS School of Technology and how you join together for that service. And I would also call to mind the Virtual Learning Academy, which is a statewide initiative, now approaching 18,000 course takers, and I know there are students from your school that take advantage of that at no cost. So there's an opportunity for your children, as well as people in Pittsburgh, New Hampshire, to take Manchurian Chinese free. It's not for all kids, but it's one of those good examples that we're sharing. So I think, sir, you're smart to look to the future. I wish we all knew what it would be, but I think if you follow the general trends of our recommendations about wireless connectivity and flexibility of space, you'll be well-served by that.
Thank you.
And I, I think C-COAS Learning Collaborative is something that we should have staff comment on, because I don't know, you must be, you must be paying a nickel or two. So we have students that are participating even today, despite what Dr. Joyce said, that the trend in driving, driving the delivery of instruction more in the home district, or home, you know, the district of residence rather than at that facility, but it's in Brentwood, and so we do have one or more students that travel there every day for a, a program that is better served in that environment with all of their resources than here, you know, on our own.
Do you may also, still sharing your transportation services too?
As well. Mike had some others?
It was just, there was a comment, trying to, okay, page 31, it's section 8, so the introductory paragraph, and I just want to make sure I understand what, what you mean by, it says, although restrictions inherent in the existing building may make it impractical to comply fully with a few of these features, we believe each should be carefully considered in any new construction or significant renovation work. Doctor, what do you, what do you mean by existing, maybe impractical in the existing building?
That's really a deference to your architect. Something, you know, certainly clean and clear when you're, when you're creating new space from nothing. And so you can follow a spec for the needed square footage we mentioned earlier. However, you may need to find a practical compromise to create an 800-square-foot classroom rather than nine, because that's the existing footprint you're working with in the renovation.
I see.
So I think what we're alluding to is that we believe these efforts will make a significant improvement and meet all of your future needs, but you may not be able to follow the same clear template you would if you were building a building brand-new.
Bus loading and unloading areas with an overhang should be provided to protect students during inclement weather. We may or may not be able to create a carport for all students coming and going, but-
But if you have that opportunity, that's-
In new construction, we, absolutely. Thank you.
I'm all saying, it's all-
Questions I had, thank you very much. Nice, good report.
Nathan, I just-
Very thorough report. I love it.
I just wanted to make one comment, that Mark gave me a call one day and said, I think we need to come back to Newmarket again.
And do it, and do it enrollment protection?
No, no, not about that, no, about completing the study, because I, I think they tried to be thorough, and I think the building is not, is, the high school and middle school high, and ju, and senior high school is not the same as the elementary school when you, when you try to sort things, sort through things. And I appreciate the fact that he made the extra trip or two.
Again, we thank you and your staff for all of your cooperation.
Great job.
Very much.
Thank you so much.
You have a wonderful team here, so thanks very much.
You have a wonderful team too. You gentlemen have moved us, moved us in the right direction immensely. We appreciate your efforts. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For public consumption, we're going to recess for the next seven or eight minutes and prepare for the board meeting at 7:00.